They're there. Okay, it's pretty sick. I also just like to say that I think we can congratulate everybody who went, whether they got an award, whether they did three tests or one test, just because, or even if they didn't even know, but they're just in FBLA. Because I feel like FBLA is an extremely good first step forward for success in being a business owner. Whether you're owning your own business, just going into a line of work, or if you want higher education, is just a brilliant process.
About how many are in your club? FBLA, yes, to me, about fifteen of you, okay, alright.
Hi everyone, I'm Madison Craig, I was senior. And so kind of to explain it a little bit, we each were able to choose three events to participate in. One was a state event and then two where I got some people qualified to go to nationals, the national conference, which is in Chicago this year. And so for my three, I chose our state one, organizational leadership was a national one. And that one I got fourth place in, so I did twelve at the nationals. And then I got second place in healthcare administration. And then second place in interviewing and etiquette skills. And so I think some of the items we took with this, those were three tests that we took. And so those are three tests that I took. And so for the testing, kind of fortunately, we each took a test that was about a pair of questions. And that's how we were ranked based on our accuracy. And I think the thing that I took in the conference is that business is not always just a business degree. It's not always pursuing that kind of administration role. So I'm thinking healthcare for my field. And so I think this is super helpful, no matter what profession you're in, no matter what kind of thing you're pursuing. And I think it's really important to be able to push the ball in FBLA, especially here in Solon, because we have had many great students that come on a lot of success here. So very exciting experience.
Hello, I'm Ashley Hall, I'm a sophomore at Solon High School. The three events I completed was help desk, and that was one that I qualified for nationals in. I also completed the introduction to public speaking, that I placed seventh in. And then my state one was teacher design, and I placed ninth in that. Standing on the stage, they called the top ten, and we all went up for all three of ours. And that was just wow, I remember sitting back there and all of us, it was just the three of us. So whenever someone from Solon was called up, we were screaming at the top of our minds. So we, we were able to like connect with other schools and convince them to, hey cheer on Solon, we've been cheering on you. And they were looking for Solon and just congratulating all of us. But when I was up there for help desk, which is what I first heard say, I have never won an award in my life. So when I was the last person standing up there, and we're like, first place, Ashley Hall, Solon Iowa. I was like, wow. So it was just, it was so good for me. I, I can't even describe it, but it was amazing.
So assuming you go back in future years, if you're not a senior, do you do the same ones or do you choose different ones? Trying to think about how this process works, is it, is it, is it, if you're second in one, you try to do better the next year? Or you kind of spread yourself around and try different things every year? How does, how do people generally handle that?
Well, none of us have been to the conference before, just because COVID and there's been some cancellations at first. But I think there are some people that do pursue like, you know, focus on the one thing. But you can definitely jump around, it's totally up to you what you want to pursue, want to change it up, try something new, run a new test, a new product. But those people first, that event, the next year you're not allowed to.
First of all, I'd say have positive value, wonderful representation at our school, are all three going to nationals?
I know, I'm actually on state parish council, so I'll be leading the state parish council. So to overlap, yeah.
We'll just assume they'll be at first.
Well, I think it's great, awesome to see those kind of results and win, bring home some of those awards. So good for you guys and yeah, looking forward to kind of hearing about next year too, hopefully those that are coming back.
How will you encourage more people to go next year? Is there, I'm assuming there's not, you can send them to school?
There were some schools, how many did they have?
They had over eighty, almost a hundred, and they took two buses there. And some of those responsible schools asked, so I think we can really, if we can enroll enough and kind of pursue it, I think it'd be very helpful for all of us. I'm trying to recruit really good people right now. Of course, we're pretty good.
I would like to share such a lot of information. I would like to point out that statistically, we were the best school there. One word is a one, we're the best school there. Everybody, every person, even our teacher got a whole.
Yeah, I think it's twenty months, is that right?
Great.
Who's in eighth before FBLA, or has it always been that?
It's always been that, as far as I know, there's two different kinds of routes that's usually there. This one, which is considered intercurricular, so there's co-curricular, inter-curricular, and inter-curricular. So this is supposed to be part of the academic day and classing of the teachers as well. It's completely student kind of blend around their means. They kind of set the agenda, you guys love doing those things, the way that they see fit.
It was Deco when I was.
But they still have Deco, it's different than FBLA.
Yeah.
I need to say, please, is my.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Anything else on salvation achievement?
Oh, just the, again, Mr. Coza had his empty art, art bowls, his art bowls. We, we took a couple of years off because of COVID and restrictions, some restrictions. That returned this year, another big success, and a lot of money is donated to the food pantry as a result of that.
Just a question, I don't know if we use the break there, it'd be great event in here. And maybe some of the students who had won awards.
Yep.
Just because he does a good job.
Yep.
Okay, next up is Focus on Learning.
Well, quickly start with, I want to start with our, Zach, just to give a brief, brief overview on our progress with Porter of a graduate. And then we'll move to admin report. You want to just give a quick overview of where we're at?
So we started working with Tony Regal, Illinois's associate street consultants. He's done a lot of work on this idea of creating a more self-reliant learner. And this topic, efficiency is what they call it. One of the first steps in that is identifying skills that we believe that we can, students should walk away with when they graduate. Regardless of ability. So it started in the fall, it was our last spring, but in the fall, with all our interns paid well, we just asked them some questions throughout what they believe about teaching and learning, on skills they believe that kids should walk away from when they graduate. And how that could play out, you know, their grade level and. Did the same thing with students specifically at the high school. We asked kids to identify skills that they believe are really important to them. Not only for themselves as individuals, but also how they interact and treat other people as well. So there was this idea of self and then of it. And so we brought all that together collectively. Mike and I and Dr. Lyons kind of highlighted some of the common themes. And we actually brought that back to all of our staff in January, kind of share with them what the top eight, maybe we're in each category as far as skills go. And then there were nine and more, so we have a pretty good tight list for what we believe as staff is important than what students believe. And then perspective is important. We've got a group of community members as well, met with them one time, we'll meet with them next week to kind of get a little more input from them around this. And then the hope would be, we have a pretty formalized document as to what these skills are. And then the real work will begin is how do we actually use the content at the secondary level that we're, that we're teaching to build these skills and how do we, you know, we get to the spot where we end up assessing them. Over the course of time, there's ten different phases, it's kind of plays out. And we're in where they just kind of face one, we're doing a little bit different than Stevenson High School did out of Illinois. They've kind of started in a different spot, but I think the overall purpose of this is to really shift the mindset around what school is. Is it, is it about achievement and grades, is it about embracing the learning process? Figuring out who we are as a person, so you have these skills. So it's a big mind shift for a lot of people. There can be a lot of things that end up changing over time, if this is where we're looking for. That's the hope.
As our, as our students, community, faculty, as, as, as we narrow those characteristics and traits down, it will impact our, our strategic plan and our vision and mission and so.
Assessment, grading.
Yeah, so we'll be coming back to the board with talking about vision statement, mission statement for the district and, and this will have impact on it. Okay, I asked Casey to come tonight for the admin report, just to, to share with the board the process that the district uses, that administration Casey leads in, in hiring coaches and in evaluating coaches.
Yeah, so I just highlighted some of the, you know, key bullet points here that, you know, we do, we go through a hiring of a head coach. And it's a little different, obviously, than head coach hiring them compared to assistant and junior high coach. So just kind of starting with the head coach process here, it's one of everything that I want to teach Iowa. And while all that's going on, trying to get together, Zach and myself and some other stakeholders in that field and kind of target what we're looking for in our next head coach, let's just say it's baseball. What we're looking for in that person, what we think that program needs. And from there, you know, if it's out on Teach Iowa, people can see it, we'll share it out on social media, trying to get people to come and apply on Teach Iowa. And we will during that time be brainstorming, reaching out to candidates that we think, you know, would be a good fit, whether that's a head coach down the road somewhere, whether it's somewhere at the college level. We'll try to target some people that we see some talent in to come in here and hopefully apply for this job. From there, you know, we'll, we'll screen all the candidates that have applied, do some reference checks, usually that call, all their reference checks, ask some questions about the candidate, and really try and narrow it down to three or four candidates that we'll bring in for a more formal interview. And then our interview, if, if we still have, if I have five or six that, you know, I think are pretty strong candidates, sometimes we'll do a phone interview with them and try to really narrow that down to three or four. And then we bring them in for a, a formal interview. I sit on that, Zach sits on that, and then usually we try to get two or three head coaches that typically aren't in season, but still maybe have some knowledge base. I've also brought in, you know, some former or some assistants that are in that specific sport. Maybe give some, some feedback that's more sports specific. So we sit through that, we go through the interview, we have a district hiring folder that we will give to the candidate and it gives them all their information, where they'll be on a case scale. We'll do a background check right there, fill out their form so I get Chris so she can run it. You know, then we'll just, usually we do a round table, everybody takes turns answering, asking questions to the candidate. After each candidate's done, we'll debrief their team, kind of feel out what everybody in the room is thinking, some of the strengths, some of the weaknesses. And then eventually, you know, come to the person that we're, what we feel confident offering the job to. We offer them that job, and then their contract is submitted here to Teach Iowa for approval. So that's kind of how we go through with our head coach hiring process. Really try and get the best candidates in here to apply, which sometimes is more challenging than others. So that's, that's that part. Now, when we get to assistants a little bit, that's a little more given the head coaches. I really even give the head coaches some hurry on this task. So either the head coach or myself, we'll do those candidates, same thing. We will reach out to some people that we think might be a good fit for this position. They will bring them in, we talk with them a little bit. If, if we feel confident that that's the person, we'll offer them the job, same thing goes through the Teach Iowa process. So when we get to head coach evaluation, I've attached kind of what the evaluator looks like. So this is through coachevaluator.com, it's all digital. So what I really like about this as a tool is I can do some in-season evaluations of coaches. I usually try to get to a couple of practices that are really that formal in-season piece. So as you can see on the tool here, or on the template, you can put in the date, the location, that, that name tab usually goes down to a practice, and then I can write in the comments. So if I have a coach that's doing something really, really well, you can give them that feedback and get submit, they get an email right there. If there's something you see there, you're like, hey, what about this? If you, you know, thought about, you know, what this looks like in your practice, they still get that feedback. So that's a little during this year, I'm trying to get to a couple of those a year. Now I'm at practices all the time, which is I don't do the, the formal in-season evaluation all the time. So as we go through this coach evaluator, also they do the same evaluation as a selfie eval for the end of the season, and I do it as well as a formal eval. And then we sit down, you know, give me a good perspective on where they're at and where I'm at. You know, if we're, if we're way off on some of these things, or if we're kind of right on. Personally, I put a lot more emphasis on the comment sections. And then, you know, giving the coach those, these coaching accomplishments and these personal goals moving forward. I think that's really important to give them some, or for me to understand kind of where they're coming from, where their goals are, and some of that. Now, always with our coaches, through the evaluation process, I have always had an open door policy. I would say in season, I'm talking to head coaches probably, if not every day, every other day. They're in my office or I'm out at practice, and you know, that's where you really kind of find out what's going on in their program. And then we get to, you know, I just put in some of this stuff from topic areas that we talk about at the end of the evaluation. You know, obviously that's all in the schedule, this is where we also go through your assistant coaches. I, I talk with them in depth about each coach they have. It's their responsibility to evaluate their assistant coach. If it's not going well, I wouldn't know about it. And then we can move on from that assistant coach following season, if we would like to. Or if there's ways that we can improve through, you know, professional development as coaches. I also really make an emphasis to get to those lower level practices and games, whether it's freshman basketball, or freshman volleyball. You know, trying to get to those practices and see that coaches, a lot of times our assistants, they're, they're really head coaches of their specific group. So they might have a template that the head coach wants them, wants to see. But most of our head coaches have, they give the authority to their assistants to say, hey, run your practice. You know, here's what I kind of want to see, but come up with your drills. And, and obviously, it's just, is their focus on the practice? I always want to be able to see the practice plan, understand that each, each practice is efficient and positive for our students. So yeah, as we go through any of that, like I said, with assistants, if we want to move on from an assistant coach, at the end of the year, we have that conversation with, with that assistant coach and, you know, just letting them know their contract from the following year. If they got any questions on any of that, or want me to go in deeper on any of it?
There's, there were thought about feedback.
Yeah, and that's one thing we talked a lot about, I actually have a WHO form ready to go. Some people that do it really, really love it, and some people really hate it. And, and what you get with that, I do think we are, yes, we are going to do it and try it. You know, usually we take out the top five percent and the bottom five percent of positivity and negativity, and you try to find like if there's any comments that may be, so I do see some benefit in that. That's something in like our profession that we talk about a lot. And some people have, they've been around a long, long time and are really good in my mind. They've done it, went away from it, came back to do it. So I don't think it's a slam dunk great idea for people, but I think, I do value, sometimes kids might put something on that form that they look themselves. So I do value that. So yes, I do think we are going to try.
So who, with all of these evaluations and all of that stuff, is this just a main sports or is this everything? Who's considered, who is considered a head coach, or who's considered, we have robotics, we have trap shooting, we have archery, with all those, are, what do you do with those sports?
So with, with all of those, we more just kind of communicate and see what their needs are. There isn't a formal sit-down and we're going to go through this. You know, I know the archery board, or the archery folks, they have their own board and, you know, kind of do their own thing, build those great with the robotics. Trap shooting, you know, sometimes it's who's willing to take this on for us, which a lot of times we find with our assistant coach jobs too. So we don't really have a formal evaluation for more of our clubs, but for our major sports, which, you know, are all fourteen or fifteen now with girls wrestling head coaches. We sit down yearly and go over, now some schools go by, you know, every two years, every three years. I really think it's important to sit down yearly and just have that.
I figured part of it was explaining to me when I got hired, was anything that wasn't under contract, I don't have contracts. So those coaching roles, some volunteers doing that over the heat for the club, I don't know. So that was probably the third of the rationale.
I think it sounds like robotics is a, you know, is a, is a paid extra duty contract. FBLA is a paid extra duty contract.
Right, but archery and trap shooting are not. Yeah. Do we have that on the, did that ever get? On the contract?
Oh, we enter, yeah, inter-curricular. Because it's inter, that's right. We, maybe the question is, for the ones that were, were issued contracts, not, not that anything's wrong with any of them, but the question about, you hate to have to go off with the process at the end, it's like if something goes south and, you know, Bill retires and isn't doing it anymore, we get a new person in there and then after two years, it's going off the rails. And what is the process we're doing to evaluate? And again, because I think Casey, what it sounds like you're saying is, it's about how do we support each other, right? Which is what do you need for me to make this successful? And then also, you know, what are you seeing from the other side that they might not be seeing because they're focused on the program? So I just wonder whether or not we need that.
Well, yeah, I guess that's what my question is, how do those groups not just tell for the fact? Because they are actively, a lot of people in all of this are just wondering if we're doing anything officially to support them? Or it's just, eh, you need something, you can talk to me, or like, if someone assigns a coaching contract, then who would be doing these things with that combination?
Yeah, so, you know, and the other ones are like cheer or dance, and, you know, we need frequently to, you know, it's not a, a formal, full-blown eval, which maybe to, you know, those as well.
Do you like pre, preseason, postseason, or just whatever they feel like we need to pop?
No, pretty, both, saying, you know, we meet in the preseason, you know, I've already met with, it was the, I ended in the fall. I read that stuff coming out for dry outs and, you know, it's, it's always that over there. Anytime they have a question, we'll do that stuff, kind of debrief of, you know, how's things going, you know, something you want to continue to do moving forward.
So one of the things I know, there's lots, there's lots of tick marks on there, and I just, just think about it for a while, just as an administrative standpoint. With the work at University, they went from this, when I first heard, there was this long evaluation form, and they really shortened it down into a couple of key areas, so it'd be more focused and more objective, may or may not be the right word, but you know, it's like, these are the things we really care about. And, you know, how are you doing this, are you meeting the needs there? So I guess, as you convey back to the coaches, just trying to, you know, when you've got sixty things on there and you've got a score for each of them, I know you've seen books on the comments, but how do you, how do you decide what's important within each of those areas? Or is there like this composite score that's for the, for the first area, which is, you know, technical? So is there a composite score and you focus on that? I'm just trying to think through, just get a better understanding of how the, how the whole process works from your standpoint in terms of providing feedback, so it's.
Yeah, the thing I like about having a lot of them is you can really focus on the areas that you see that they might need to grow at. And then you can celebrate the areas that they're doing really well. So the majority of them, now this was just a template, so there's all fours. The majority of these, when I do them, are going to be threes typically. And then we talk about more of outliers, like the ones that, you know, you get a two on something, what, what are, what am I seeing as the reason you're getting that? Or if you get four, what am I seeing that I'm getting that? You know, so I want to be able to, huge coach wants to do, do things better, obviously. But they should also be celebrated as well, because you've got a lot of really great coaches. So that's kind of, you know, you, you have all these different, you know, areas that you're talking about. There might be one or two of those on there that are worth for one coach, that for another coach should not work at all. So that's kind of what I would, and then that's where my comments go with it, are really those.
So how, how do you make use of this in terms of, if a coach is struggling? So walk me through how you, you saw folks that were struggling. So let's say we've got rugby, because now it's sport, and our coach is struggling and, and we're not on the same page about where we're trying to go. How, how would you use this from season to season? Because I know, like, teachers, if they're struggling, we use an improvement plan. So how, how does this relate to some of the stuff we do in that regard in terms of kind of closing loops so that we, you know, do, you know, at the end of the season, say, these are the things you personally need to improve it. So if they say three unsatisfactors, you need to improve at these. Just walk me through how you think about that process, so I can get a better feel for it.
Yeah, so with a lot of that, it's going to be all known and out there before we can give them this. Like, it's not going to get to a, oh, surprise, you've got a bunch of ones and twos here. It's more of through that in-season eval, whether I see an issue at practice or something, or if stuff just isn't going well, we have, you know, whole meetings during that season. And then when we sit down at the end of the year, yes, they will be, you know, they might have some unsat, unsatisfactors or areas for growth, but it's, it's definitely not going to be a surprise. It's going to be something that we've talked about throughout the whole season. Areas like, hey, we need to be better in this area. Because I think a lot of times when we have a lot of those things going on, those are things that can be fixed. So I will let them go.
It seems like an area you should have at least one question in.
Well, they have a lot of contact. They're evaluating, we got us people from robotics to football, to dance and to band, you know, and that's all the things we touch. Our kids more than even our teachers. So it's hard to really important, you know, to your relationship with those. So like, like Jamie said, you know, everyone is, you know, a vantage to this process. And people are very, because they really have their best, and a unique opportunity to impact students.
In areas where the students really care.
Quite, yeah.
So questions?
We're not ready yet, okay. I have a report, if you want to.
Yep, sounds good.
Push up. Just to start with a quick district report, Mike, you have how many kids out in DC right now?
Right at fifty.
Fifty, we've got about fifty eighth grade kids that flew out at Tuesday morning, Wednesday.
Going in at two thirty.
AM.
Hopefully they're quieter than the ones I got stuck up. Not, they weren't Solon kids, but I got stuck in DC and got put up in a hotel that had all these.
A school trip?
School trip, and I'm like, you literally put me on a floor with middle schoolers, running up and down the hallway.
But Solon kids are different, they're.
I also, I also had a window overlooking the pool, and that was just, and that been closed till eleven PM, like, great. So.
Oh, brum.
I wish I was more of a.
It was one of the few rooms available to be, to be sleeping at the airport that night.
All right.
I mean, it's where it's, you know. So I've been doing, I've not been participating in that, we're going through twenty plus years, not once I've seen a phone call, an issue they had. They had an issue yesterday. Capitol Hill was evacuated, and so I have the pleasure of picking up all these addresses immediately now. The kids wouldn't know where near that, they would not be anywhere near that, they're safe, um, and then come to find out this is a story unwound. For the baseball game, they had a third pump coming in, the third shooters, and they forgot to notify.
Ooh, someone's in trouble. Lost a few bars on his sleeve, uh, after that one. All right, just a quick update, um, personnel, tell you that we've been doing a great job, um, getting vacancies filled. Um, already we have high school, science, ELA, teacher library, industrial tech, which is now full time in the district. Um, elementary, uh, we had some two third grade positions, some of these were carried over from last year, the science and the third grade position. We have been very impressed and pleased with the application pool, because I know it's not, it's nationwide, but it's also hit in Iowa, you know, that, um, the pool of applicants. We've been pleased this year where we've got, uh, multiple applications uh, for our various positions from neighboring districts. So, I mean, again, that's a great sign that we're doing things right. We are currently screening, uh, for a nurse vacancy and a counselor vacancy, and, um, Josh has been leading that search. We'll have those wrapped up in, in a week. Yeah, really good pool, really good pool, and I know with the counseling, it's, it's gonna be at Lakeview, so, um, initial screening, Josh has included Holly in those initial screens, we're doing it before work, after, before her contract, after the end of the day, to do the initial screening on that, so that she can be included in that. We've got two reading recovery, um, positions that, um, we are, will be advertising for. And of course, we've got that, um, CFA position, that's gonna be a hard, hard to find position. It was a unique skill set that Keith has, um, the fact that, uh, the flexibility that he had. It, it was at the time, just, you know, um, fifteen hours a week that we, the contract was built on, of course, we know there were weeks that he put in thirty or forty hours, and then there were some weeks that it might have been two to five hours, but, you know, it averaged over fifteen hours, so we're, we're trying to do some creative things there, we're still looking, hoping that there might be that unique skill set up there. We've actually even talked to Sound Concepts out of Cedar Rapids, they're the ones that installed all that equipment in there. They're the ones that have troubleshoot anything that goes wrong. They're the ones that Keith calls, and, you know, we've even talked about outsourcing, you know, some bigger events. If we don't have luck finding someone with, with that skill set that Keith has. And then, of course, we're prepping for a, uh, larger, um, uh, bus driver, uh, advertisement to, to bring more into the pool. Um, I, I know Casey and Dave have done a, a really good job this spring. Um, there's not many, too many junior high programs that if our boys junior high, uh, team and our girls junior high team depart separate directions, we pretty much need four buses. Well, with, with our nine routes and sending out our high school track teams, boys and girls, uh, we only have five bus to stretch, you know, five buses to go out, and so we've done some creative things where we'll send a bus out with the early events, and as soon as a route driver gets back at three thirty, three forty, then we'll use that and, and follow up with the rest of the team, so they're finding creative ways. Um, shuttling, if it's a Mount Vernon event, we may drop off a load, come back, get another load. So doing some creative things to make sure that busing doesn't restrict us from an event. So, um, kudos for overcoming that. Um, I put some Kirkwood data, uh, we had lunch with, um, Kirkwood, the Kirkwood president, Josh and I did uptown. Uh, she's new, I think, a year at the job and, and, um, her statement was, well, I was told I needed to come and, and meet you at Solon, because I hear you're the innovators and movers and shakers in, in the region. So we had a great lunch with her and, and Christie Black was with her and, and gave us, um, some of this data that you see here. It, some of it's compiled over the last three years, academic years nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Hundred and fifty-one students participated in those career academies in Corvile. We have fifty-nine participating in the current year. You can see our top programs, patient care, advanced manufacturing with welding and robotics, and then, of course, um, architectural construction and engineering, the ACE program, and that's what Keith has been teaching the introductory to that program. Those kids that take that, those classes from Keith, uh, they can then go right into that ACE program at, uh, Kirkwood. Nine hundred and fifty-two liberal art registrations, courses over the last three years, and you can see the top three courses. And those are very popular, because you go to about any school, regional school, private school, those are accepted as, as your English. Eighty-one percent of Solon students enrolled earn a C or higher. And I compared that to seventy-seven was the rest of the corridor. Forty percents of our, forty-six percent of our high school students participate in concurrent enrollment. And I thought, gosh, that, that number seems pretty high, but remember, our financial literacy class that we teach to all juniors, which is required of all juniors, is concurrent enrollment. So that really elevates that number. When you talk about nine, twelve students, our student body, forty-six percent of them are enrolled in concurrent enrollment, that's because our entire junior class has to be, yeah. And then, um, you can see forty point five percent of last year's graduating class graduated with twelve or more credits. That's a semester. That's, that's, I was blown away by that, which over the last three years, Kirkwood tuition uh, combined all those students that enrolled in concurrent enrollment in academic year nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one was a savings for those families combined of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So, good Kirkwood data, um, our kids continue to take advantage of it. High school does a good job, I think our, our schedule is really the way it's set, that's an advantage of our schedule, it allows students to do both. So, um, and then I just wanted to, I know Tim and Adam have been participating throughout the year. Uh, we have Susan Bolt D. and Jane. Remember.
CPU.
Jane from CPU, Purb, they're from Purb, Public Employee Relations Board, they've been facilitating conversations with, um, district and teacher labor management, and we've been exploring alternative salary schedules. And, uh, I put in there one thing that we've, we've agreed upon as a district and teacher labor management team, as we look at alternative salary schedules, we, we, we can agree on those shared interests. We want to make sure that we provide annual increases across all levels of, of experience and all levels of education that our teachers have, masters, BAs, whatever. We, we don't ever want anyone to make less money the following year. We want to recruit, um, high quality candidates, retain those candidates. Um, a schedule that keeps up with inflation and insurance costs, it incentivizes retention, and it's a salary schedule that's understood by all, and that's a challenge that we have right now with our current schedule. We have various challenges, depending on who you speak with, uh, with our current schedule, and that's why we want to have these conversations. And as we look at other alternative types of schedules, we're kind of looking at, is it understandable, is it ratifiable, meaning that everyone can agree it's, it's all right, it, it's pretty good? Is it mutually satisfying, beneficial, of course, if it's legal, I make sure our salaries, and is it affordable? And as a whole team, teachers and district reps, we agreed upon the statement that all of the above, with the understanding that everyone values the long-term sustainability of our district. We want to always be in a position to where, uh, we can provide teachers the resources they need in the classrooms, instructionally, professional develop, you know, that we can always be in a position to say yes.
No, we were required to move the, to change the salaries.
No, there are districts that have just changed it, but, um, I think we all felt as a whole, be a great, great year, since we aren't negotiating, since we got that done in August, that we can just spend the year in conversation, collaboration, and just explore together. And as a benefit, maybe, you know, build relationships, but, you know, collaborative atmosphere, things like that, so.
It is interesting to see the difference. For other districts or challenges and, you know, just what's facing, but, I mean, there's, there's a lot of differences between just the surrounding districts, so. One of those ways, so. Any other questions? Move a few things real quick, the only thing I want to point out on the what you updated on the facilities side of, there's some, you know, there's some push for, uh, trying to find a little playground for the middle school. I'll just kind of pause right now while we try to figure out how that off the team. Our broader vision for where we're going in the district, and so, I just wanted to bring it up that there's a, because I just to try and provide some options, I think there's gonna be some games available, uh, next year. Uh, some of the bigger, more permanent things are, are kind of, um, and we'll try and get those back on track once we, once we know more about our broader plan, so. Once there's anything else that we have from the phase that we're supposed to report this month. Consent agenda. We've got that, the first question that I always ask, is there anything you want to pull out?
Um, yeah, I think we should pull out, um, contracts, just for, for discussions.
Good, pull that out when we're back down to action items, uh, anything else? Very done. The entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. So, motion by Coons. Accepted by Alaska. All in favor, somebody by the way saying aye, aye, pose. Motion carries unanimously. If there's no objections, I know, probably it's got a very short time left for us to run, move down, and just start talking about heading three hundred action items, and then move back up to anyone, kind of work our way through them. Which is in the open times. Hearing no objection, let's jump into discussion of open times. We started this in February, and so we come back to it, and we're now back at that point. In each of your packets, you've got a copy of the current policy. That we've got in there, and I think we don't have a we've got the issues we discussed last night, I think there's not a current policy from the side, uh, in terms of how to implement, so I think this is gonna so we, uh, I think we've got a couple of options in terms of try to amend it and go through tonight, over to some, some, some guiding principles, and direct the task of the policy committee, ask them to come back with a policy, policy based on those priorities, so. I know some people had to hold on for the last time, I know the administration's gonna have some conversations, go out with the Walmart, probably is gonna chat with some of her patrons at high school and the rest of the, that went on the policy committee, we're gonna get some input from other folks around the district as we talk to them, so. No reason, you've got the shortest time left, and you've got a, somebody to pick up here at six twenty-five, some of the practice, you know. I guess the question, I'll, I'll give the focus, you know, we don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, kind of, what it, we care when we're hurried, so.
So I've talked to some athletes and we, like, they don't mind having Sunday practices or Wednesday practices, they just want at least one day off a week. And like, it's totally up to each, each standard is, but also I know one thing a lot of athletes are struggling with right now is open gyms and like in-season sports, because I've talked with some boys, and they're in football, basketball, golf, or track and baseball, all like at the same time. And they're worried about if they miss one open gym, that they're gonna be like punished for missing that open gym. So that's something huge right now, a lot of athletes are struggling.
When we talk about, you're right, it's kind of sharing these two athletes, right, like it's the one day off. Basketball, like, you know, you have Saturday or Sunday, what the day is, somebody else is utilizing that time, whether it be baseball, softball, or, so. Yeah, I, I think that's important, because they're not getting it out, and it's always leave the next day, or somebody's gym available, it's, it's, you gotta jump in if you don't. It doesn't matter whether it's in the classroom or you know, on the field or wherever, it's, it's a lot of things laid down, and it's a year, so.
But I would talk to him, I'd talk to the person, the football's in respect, he's, he'll probably let it manage that, but, but Fridays, Sundays, it's basically awards, you know, the cashing will be just two, like, the awards, we can, we can build out with more approaches, if we are, kind of move better. Um, so he's definitely conscious about it. The thing that actually, Mark Silver said this the best, kids are not commodities, right? I mean, they, they have their own lives, so they're not like, you know, Cole, or you can't just burn whatever you need you, you know, and the thing is, and get us that, that conversation, I don't know, that's kind of social, you face it. You know, how do you sit down, all players, okay? I'm talking to fine arts, I'm talking athletics, how do we look at these students, you know, talk about all these things being academically. Um, Zach was just talking about this, these things, and how do you find out, so these kids, and I don't like that, when our kids, when my kids are going through, you know, they're just pulled in the way, and they just feel stressed out, because, you're right, they don't want to let anybody do that, that's what makes them so successful. And, um, how do we, how do we protect their time? And, you know, they're just gonna talk about a couple of times, can we get all the players together, try and sell them yourself, if it's, if it's, if it's kind of more of this. At what point time can get, get for it, right? Because they need it, right? We don't find as hard as they pay us, and the hard part is, every coach has the greatest events. Until May, we have to actually go through the day with the athlete back. And if you know, a lot of the damage, then I think it's going to edge, you know, with the softball, and then some other thing that's up in that, that I, when you had a better, you know, pretty soon, their all their days are full all the time. And we don't really have those breaks, and so those are the things I think we're most concerned about, is you guys. And, um, you know, no approach here is, or no activities here, I know much of that's not doing on purpose, I know quite a lot doing on purpose, they all have the greatest protections for play, you know, but how do these kids fit this all in? It's gonna become even more difficult as the district is big. You know, and even so, I think we need to be ahead of this. I think, um, you know, I think it's worth sitting down with a lot of people at stake, because really, they don't have a good voice, you know what I mean? Their voice is, you know, I can't, this, I mean, I can tell this from the deck, no, you're not going, I have to go. You just got back from this, you're not going, I'll call the coach, no, I'm going, you know what I mean? And so the kids just find it, you know, and that, that's what makes this great, you know what I mean? But it also created a detriment to mental health and physical health.
Give me any.
Well, it's, we can try all, we want to get all approaches together, but we know that that's not realistic, there's not gonna be a time at all. And there are, there are basketball, open gyms going on already, that season's not till this winter, but it's happening. There's soccer's going on, open gym, starting in, I think, December probably, there's wrestling stuff, there's lifting all year long, no matter what, so. There, and there are, there are some, but most of our kids, I There, and there are the, there are some, but most of our kids, I think, are in multiple sports. There's for every season, so all year, they have. At least three sports, they're trying to get to all these things too. And every coach thinks they're, so it's the most important. So, and every coach sees the potential in these kids for their sport. But still, at the end of the day, unless we as a district say we're shutting it down for this day. Period. Then they're still gonna get pulled in every direction. Cause there's gonna be voluntary that that these kids know are not. They're voluntary officially, but they know they're not gonna play, so they don't show up to all these practices, so. Unless we really, really want to actually do something for these kids, the only way it's gonna happen is to take a day and say. This day's out for everyone.
Sure.
Period.
Sure.
That's the, that's the only way I can see, we can try the other ways, but we know what's gonna happen. Because every coach thinks their, their sport or their event or their. Activity.
For sure.
Is the most important. As in the choir director, she's the president, all these kids with great voices, he wants them there. And the football, coaches see the potential in these kids for football, maybe they could get a scholarship for any of those things, art. Any of them. Um, and so we all want the best for our kids, but we all have one move on for our own activity. Um, but the kids are, they don't want to let any coach down, they don't want to let the coach down, they don't want to let the choir director down, they don't want to let the band director down, they don't want to let the parents down. So they're gonna try as hard as they can in all of these things, cause who knows what they're gonna get this scholarship for. But we as a district are saying, we are here for these kids. I feel like the only way we actually can give them a day off is to say. We're taking this day off. No matter what.
Sure.
But that's the, that's the only way I can see that we can actually do what we say we want to.
For sure. I would say in fairness, though, talking to Casey and, you know, the people, I mean, you're unlimited, we're still. Participation numbers. Um, participation numbers, it's hard to practice these kids, right, like. Like, bad time, more baseball, right, we gotta like you, you got that many listeners in baseball, let's tune in Saturday, at least softball, although it's not, it's really Sunday. I'm with you, we gotta get a day. I I think it's hard from a facility standpoint to giving these kids an opportunity to actually have practice. So, I don't know, I don't know the answer right now.
Well, I agree with ninety-nine point nine percent of what you said. The one thing you said is. We can make our coaches who's better. We can, that is the district. We can say, everybody has to either support me, you wanna coach next year, we're gonna figure this out. You know what I mean? And we can do it on a Wednesday afternoon, because really, I really think in case help, helping with it, if we lay out what everybody wants. And they're all in there, cause a lot of times coaches don't talk to each other. You know what I mean? I mean, for for the first time, baseball and football talk to each other than most issues that happened in my previous sixteen, fifteen years. You know, and we, and so I think if everybody can start to see what lays out, people will have a better understanding. But I would much rather have them have the opportunity to figure this out than us figure it out. You know what I mean?
And I guess my only point on that would be, we're, we're at the spot where we're visiting the policy because we, we loosened it up because it wasn't, the previous policy wasn't being followed. And now we've got a new policy that there seems to. Be, at least the spirit is not being adhered to. And so, you know, should it take the threat up, we're gonna lock it down to get people to figure out how to make it work. You know, at what point do we as a board say, we tried this experiment, we said, well, liberalize it and let them figure it out and make it work? And now we're, we're at a spot where it doesn't work. And, you know, we.
And I think part of it, Tim, I don't disagree with you, but part of it is, we've had new coaches come in since then. You know what I mean? So having an opportunity to revisit this with all the new coaches in the district, have the case needed, whoever more facilitated. You know, and I know they're all busy, but we have our kids in state. And we wanted to take my kids through it, then just take my kid through it, I take my other kids through it. You know, I mean, we've been here with some of the kids, it's valid, that's how it's really valid. And, um. But the people involved, I think, they all look like this. And maybe if they're all together and they see, oh, hey, they have to fire this person, they have, you know, I mean. I'm hoping that we will, we can come to some of the limits on the best things that we can use for the.
One, so maybe a first step rather than. At this very point right now, revisiting this is to do that first. And see if it is something that can be worked out, give it a trial for a couple of months and see what we see is happening. And that if that can't be successful. I mean, I, I'm all for people working things out and working together, and I think that you're right, I think that all of these activities don't communicate at all. There are some times in my experience with marching band and football. There's definitely a clear non-communication issue with those two. And so that's, that right there causes problems. Alright, so if we can get everyone together and try to hatch it out and see each other's points and see each other's value. So I think there's a lot of. Headbutting because people want, they want. Or they're, yeah, they want what there is important to them, but if they can see each other's value, all the focus and leaders of. Everything, can see each other's value and work together, that's gonna show a lot to the kids about cooperating and talking with each other and. Valuing other humans and all of that kind of stuff. So that might be a more important first step to start and try and then work our way here if we have to.
Well, I think certainly, I think the policy, at least. How's, how significantly the policy has to change, I think, we, we, we can still, I think, at a certain extent, one of the things that shifts on it is just the purpose. And I think we talked about this last time, which is it's not just about community relations and preserving time, it is about. Mental health and the wellbeing of our students that we want, we want to have time that is available for them. It's like, keeping that in mind, that the purpose isn't just about community relations, which the, the policy implies. It is, it is about the best interest of our students, going in the, in the broad spectrum, not the best interest of the student as it relates to basketball, football, wrestling. Track, cross-country, robotics, archery, it is about the whole child and what's in the best interest of that, of that child, so we don't. We don't burn them out and don't put them in a spot where they feel like they're failing because they can't live up to the expectations that everyone has. So, so I'm not opposed to. You know. Referring this back off the policy committee and, and having them. You know, coordinate with the administration about getting additional input and, and instructing the admin to, to have a meeting to kind of hash this and see. Where we think some things are workable. I, I just think. We've seen an increasing frequency, I think this work counts, you know, we've seen increasing frequencies of. Well, on various, it's the policy, there's a lot more things that are being. They used to be rare and now they're more frequent. And I, that's the, that's the challenge that we face. And you obviously were talking about, you know, the policy, what are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, every decision that, that we feel like we're making is in the best interest of our programs. We're like having Wednesday events. What, what we feel like's gonna happen is we don't try to make it work for those kids, is they're just not gonna do those things. So what we're trying to do right now is, we believe that a kid should be well-rounded and be in a lot of things. And with that comes a lot of time to commit for those things. You know, and, and I think when you start taking away some of these other areas, what I see happening then maybe is kids not being involved in this because. Now, you know, you, you said they won't choose their coach, well, if you say, let's say a choir concert or something's here, but we have a soccer game here. Well, now if we're missing because of this, you know, are, are they gonna choose, well, I'm not gonna be in soccer, I'm not gonna be in choir. You know, so we've tried our hardest to make it work forever for our kids. And it pushes, it pushes some things around a little bit. Um, and then what, what's out of our control sometimes is scheduling of facilities, so soccer is a big one. Because it's not just when our facility's available, it's another school that we might be playing against. So we might look at a whole season, there might be one or two dates. So let's say this Monday we had reserved for this event. But this is the only date in the whole season that we can play this game, this game that we have to play. So that's what makes it harder, you're in advance even, to say, well, we're not gonna be anything on this day. So then the kids have to choose, okay, am I gonna go to this concert or am I gonna go to this soccer game? Cause you know, on your policy, that's like a game they do. They're gonna make a choice. Now, if it's a game of practice, that's easy. You know, and then, um, you know, we have regional soccer gets assigned, it's on a Wednesday night. You know, so that's a state event that they're making us play on the Wednesday. Um, so those things are out of our control, say we're not playing that night.
I think, you know, I think we've, you know, we've historically, you know, as we went through, we had the conference with the state, the state does what it does, cause each conference has their own. You know, we used to be in Eastern Iowa Hawkeye, which is Thursday night, the Walmart became Wednesday night, it had its conflicts, and I think, you know. Now, I think, I think the. I think the important thing to keep in mind though is at least what we heard from Hillary was, the current system's not working. Students are not finding it working, they, there is, you know, it may work for the programs, it's not working for the students. And I've, I've heard that from parents. Like, I had a nice long conversation with a parent at Hy-Vee on Tuesday, in the middle of the day where I stopped in. And, you know, their, their, their kid is thinking about dropping a sport because there are too many demands on them during the, the in-season for their sport that's the preferred one. And so they're, they're contemplating whether or not they're gonna go off for it next year because they like both, but they're not willing to. Give up on their primary sport to meet the requirements of a offseason sport. So, uh, I think those are, I think those are good conversations to have, and I think Casey can do a good job of talking to other coaches, but how do we, how do we look through this? But I think the message we've heard from the community and from our students is that we gotta find a way to, to provide some balance in this.
But unfortunately, we find that we're still on that side of things. We don't share that piece well. Good. Do I know why? That's what we don't like to do. We ask a lot out of our kids when they're in the offseason. For a different sport when the season's finished, and there's, and people's figured out, I know there's a who's all, but we don't talk to each other to chat with you. You know what I mean? It becomes this, it's my season, all along. And they, and, and what we have to get, find arts involved too, because it's, it's the same, and so. I would really urge the district to look at sitting all day, not, I doubt it, excuse, no. This is our students at the Wednesday night, if we can do it before it gets too bad. You know, and they should all be available at some point in time, because this is the most important thing that we can probably do outside of. It's gonna find a balance for that. It's gonna be a hard call, okay, but I'm gonna tell you, I've watched this district hard call, okay, numerous times for our students. You know what I mean? And I trust this administration to do that. This is no different than you guys, Y'all, you, Y'all, you see, you know, we did it better than most. And if there's somebody who's gonna be motivated and find a way to make this work, it's this district. You know what I mean? And I know you guys can do it, because we've never had all the people sitting down at the same time, at the same table. Relationships have been broken over the years, and coaches and people are like this, we're gonna come together.
Dan, so. Your example of COVID, I mean, it was our goal, and it was our vision, we had a very clear vision. We're going to find a way to get students and staff here safely every day to educate face-to-face. So, and, and so we had a very clear vision on, okay, this is, how are we gonna get there? What, what are we, if we sit down with all coaches, what is, what are we, what are we reaching for, what are we going after? Wha- what is, I mean, can you define that for us?
Well, we, for kids, right, in the, say, yeah, we have one designated day, it's, we have nothing from school. Regardless of the sports I'm in, regardless of the season I'm in, one day off.
And then they may, like the creative part, they, that day may be different day for. You know what I mean? Maybe this time it's this day, this time it's this day. You know what I mean? Because, you know, the point you made last time, you may be young and deep about playing football. I mean, if you're gonna come back and have them go over and practice on a Saturday, you know, I mean. That's just flip them right back around when they get home, that, you know what I mean? Because typically they like to have this rush time off, so maybe at some point in time, it's a Saturday off, you know what I mean? And, and maybe in basketball, it might be Sunday, or, you know.
Uh, and yeah, it would happen during the winter, you have all the wrestling Saturdays and, and you schedule a lot of basketball games on Saturdays, so it would have to be.
Right, so, but I mean, just, you know, just look at it all, and then the other thing is, how do we fit choir? And, you know, martial arts, and all those issues.
I would say for the majority of our program, Saturday is the off day, this is a competition.
Right, but then with what has happened? They start sleeping practices on Saturdays for offseason stuff. You know, I mean, from seeing baseball still, you know, you know, whatever.
Baseball, those, yeah, but the majority of our, especially in the athletics, the majority is a number of all four Saturday.
Right, and like, yeah, and then except for the winter's going up, then it's usually outside.
But I mean, just, and it's. But there's a big concern in this cross-country, there's marching band.
Right, for sure, there's so many pieces, so just need to get all together and see for our kids, it's not for our marching band and football. They're now.
Saturday marching band.
When I started ten years ago or whatever, coaching, probably, we had a lot of football players in marching. They were quite a, they've been in the whole. But because of conflict. We had, we had, I think, two this year, and there were a lot of conflicts, and they almost failed band because they didn't want to take all practice, they don't want to disappoint. But. Our practices are set in time and they get great for that, they almost failed game because they didn't want to disappoint. And they knew they wouldn't get to play, I don't know how much they get to play or not get to play, I don't know anything except for that they were gonna fail. They don't want to disappoint football practice. So there are conflicts, and we hardly have it, and that's why we don't have. I mean, we see videos of our football player running on the field to play at halftime, we don't do that here because we can't get along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, basically next step, try to get everybody together. We evolve one day.
So, so you're talking either trying to figure out Saturday or Sunday, cause that's.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Can, can I ask it, and maybe this is a conversation. A continued discussion. On, right now in our policy, it talks about Wednesdays and Wednesday's free, six o'clock beyond is free. Is there a, is there a. Labor Day to Memorial Day, is there, you, you know? Is it every day that we're in session, August twenty-third to, in this case, May twenty-sixth, does it stop May first? How does that?
As a longer-serving board member, I can tell, with my understanding during my tenure in the board was, it was from the first scheduled day of school. To the last scheduled day of school. That was not always the practice across all the buildings, different buildings had different interpretations because it's not explicit.
Yeah.
And so from a board perspective, that's what it's all, that's what it always was, that was not always how it was implemented in each of the buildings.
And, and I ask something because, you know, of course, we want to do a good job and we want to implement board policy, we want to make sure we understand. Because again, like you said, Dan, some of this, we have a whole new group of coaches compared, that are different compared to ten years ago.
For sure.
And administration is the same way. Over the last ten years. So just a rock-solid, you know, interpretation, and then we'll.
Well, Adam and I actually spoken about this, because my understanding with outgoing policy or intent was that it started when church. Started meeting in the fall, and then it ended when church ended meeting in the spring.
That, that's how the high school handled it.
Yeah, that's, and that's what I, we did, but, you know, the.
From a policy standpoint, it probably for, you know, it was, it was essentially called family night, not church night. The changeover.
Over time.
Well, plus they, it was originally called church night when I joined the board, and then it quickly shifted to family night. With the idea that it's, not everyone is going, is attending church acting that evening. It might have been when we joined the Walm, the Walmac is when we changed the language. It switched nights. Um, but it was advised by S B that district should not call it that anymore. They should call it. Opened on family time, because again, you're trying to accommodate everybody who had that, that night off. But it was really to meet community needs for having some technical time during the week, but. I think one of the struggles is that, you know, if you think about it from that perspective. Back in the day, the Methodist Church and Catholic Church in town, they had a unified schedule and it was consistent. Now there's other. Small churches, we got people to go to services in different communities as we've grown. It's no longer just, let's worry about what. Those two churches do because our population is larger, it's doing more things, so.
There's a flexibility though, and it's good, we're like a target piece. You know, there's gonna be athletics and sports where something has to happen all at once.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, there's gotta be rescheduled, or, or some of those sports are, is soccer that we're running, we're probably. Or maybe you'd be touching.
Yeah, officials, I mean, we've been told, we played a couple soccer games that were really hitting. Because we were told, if you cancel, be prepared to play on a Wednesday or Sunday, because it's one time you're getting officials. And that's why a lot of bigger schools, four A, five A's, they play soccer almost. So then, you know, you're putting that into the equation too, can't play without.
Well, I, I think that's what it might be doing over the years, you know, in my own case, you know, every, every board either.
Having rescheduled, it's like a statement, if we have to reschedule, there's a difference in that versus, 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 versus scheduling, you know? You know, you know, more scheduling regular season games and they're scheduled outside, you know, during that window, that, that was, that's a different. Threshold than is.
Well, I agree.
And so. Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point, which is, I think, why would you give flexibility, you know? Even like with postseason, you know, you've got, you, you, you're postseason and you need to practice, you've got a game on Thursday for. Volleyball and you really need a Wednesday practice. Well, that's not our standard practice, but the A D has the authority to. Give that waiver because there's a specific need that's outside the norm. I think it does become one, well, the question for us does become, what are we standardly doing versus what are the exceptions that affect a small number of individuals? And so, I think the other point, because we've tackled like Wednesday or Sunday, it comes into things like, you know. Our long practice has been, you said, plays, the plays, musicals are kind of Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that, hey, and. That long predated me, that even though we had the rules that said you don't do that, they were, I was, it's kind of like graduation. You know, we do graduation on a Sunday, we also do the play the musical on a Sunday. I said, okay, that's, that's where the practice is.
But I think there's a thing, let them figure out, let them have an opportunity before you hash this out, looking at this. What else will we want to do here this far forward direction?
I think, I think the other thing too, to keep in mind is, I'm talking specifically around the high school space. But we're thinking about the community relations overall, using. Something that we want to trickle down into that, or is this strictly for ex-students? They're gonna have siblings that are younger, there's would be practicing six or seven days a week, or this or that as well, not being a part of. So I think that needs to be a piece too, we try to be able to bring all of those stakeholders in. In one setting to get input or feedback from them. So I don't know what that difference looks like or what that should look like, it's just.
I think it's, it's a good point. I think what this really reflects is for school sports and activities. We can't control what the outside groups do. You know, if, if you, if your kid's on a third grade basketball team and you're playing down at North Dodge. That's a family choice and chosen that that's the best time for your family. Five years ago was, this trip doesn't own my kid. I feel, I feel like, you know, I'm having to negotiate with the district on when. Or what time do I get with my kid? I, we can't go out of town because the district scheduling things on the weekend, and my kid tells me they can't miss them. It's like, if those are.
And I think that helps.
Yeah.
That's what we've heard, you know, there's things, Sunday evenings, it's a club ball. You know, and that's, that's the piece we hear where people want a night off. Well, I hear the opposite, that we need to provide. For our kids, so they're not playing on a club team in Iowa City where they're traveling Iowa City to practice four or five times a week. You know, but if we don't offer that time for them here, that's our only other options. You know, so there's, there's old science of it too, as far as what do we buy in this district and what do our kids inhale as much as possible? Or we want them to go find what they're looking for somewhere else.
Because that really comes up on there, that the next item will be agenda, remember, performance is the, you know, the use of facilities. And, you know, we talked about this a little bit last time, and we'll, we'll touch on that, we'll give that also, I think we're gonna refer that one as well, but I think. There's a pretty distinction if you notice. We brought nine oh five point one up at the same time, because there's a discrepancy in terms of times related to that, and so, you know. So we were open at one time to not, and it's like, there's just some clarifications in why we should be consistent between those in terms of just times that they're available. So. So what I hear is that this is gonna be referred off to the policy committee and administration to. Come back to us at a later point, maybe it's more clarity.
There's a motion to refer to the policy committee, first to yourself?
I'll make a motion to defer to the policy committee and administration.
Especially by Wolf, second by Coons. Accepted by Adam, all those in favor signify by saying aye, or aye. Motion carries unanimously, I think it's a good discussion. Everyone's, as I said, everyone's heart, this is the right spot. We want to, we want what's best for our students. And we just have to find a way to, to get there and how do we, how do we piece something together that, that's working. With that. That will move us back, we'll come back to nine oh five point one, but that, that goes back to such budget hearing for F Y twenty-two budget amendment. Um, so Davis, this, Pat reminded me about this, but we. We have, we have, we have silos and we have to rebalance the silos. Because we're approaching the end of the year to make sure that we don't go over spending in any of the categories that the state has set. And so every year we do this, uh, and Pat has, uh, has chaired the budget amendment with us that she wants to publish. Which will shift the spending authorities within each of the silos. But basically, what we're authorizing is Pat to publish this and then set a public hearing for people to provide feedback on it. And so the community will get to, get to see it all. So this just keeps us from getting in trouble. Pat really wants us to do is somebody say that, that we're gonna set a public hearing on the fifth, fifth, history of your twenty-two budget. Limit for May nineteen, at five thirty P M, and then she'll publish it and, um, we'll. See who, see if anybody comes to talk this. I unfortunately am up there, so I am as well, but I don't think our community would be happy if we set a, a, a public hearing at five thirty A M. Motion by Coons, second by Alask, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, pose. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up on the agenda is the approval of pre-bond, is a approval of pre-bond referendum services with I S G, which used to be Structure.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I put the contract in there that, um, Structure or I S G sent us. Two weeks ago, Jamie, Tim and I sat down with. Representatives from Structure, I'm sorry, from I S G.
Yeah, well, we, we'll continue to call.
Yeah.
They always call themselves something different now, because, you know.
Structure is the company that we, we work together with for thirty, forty-three million dollars worth of. School facilities, so we're just kind of, uh, they're like family to us.
It's the same people.
Same people, yep. So anyway, um, we sat down with them, we did a, uh, well. We sat down with them to talk about what supports they could provide us. With this whole pre-bond referendum with facilitating. Community discussion, with collecting data, with analyzing data, with getting facts out there. Marketing media, you know, uh, also with making sure we hit all the timelines. Uh, when it comes to, uh, Johnson County, you know, paperwork stuff, so. You see the contract, it's, you know, law terms, and then they sent this additional page. As kind of a breakdown of the services that they would do. It's, it's not cheap, but, um, I think their services will be very thorough. Um, in helping us lead this. This, um, initiative as far as involving stakeholders, the community. In establishing that, uh, five, ten, twenty-year vision for our district and bonding to. Pay for it.
Do you have anything more to share from the, the Paul?
I, I think it was helpful. I am struggling with how much it's gonna cost.
Also, so, so this is a service that they, this is a service that wasn't provided in the past. And so what this really is, is offloading stuff off of Davis and Jamie and I. You know, and so some of it's offloading that, the other is providing services that we wouldn't otherwise get, so some of the stuff. So they would do, they would help out with doing community survey when we get closer in, to make sure we get a better understanding of the community. Probably the, the priorities. Um, so it, it would make. It puts us in a better spot on a successful bond run, but we have to give you the sense. No, it's a, it's a, it's a sort of professional services.
There are definitely some tremendous advantage, but like Jamie, it, it's costly. It's costly. I mean, you, you know, they will. I mean, the lady. One rep that was there has, has, has worked with over four hundred communities, uh, doing this. And, um, you know, she talked about her experience, she talked about the survey, that's so important. You know, the surveying will allow us also to give us feedback as far as. Are we communicating well enough? Does, does our community understand what we're wanting to do, trying to do? Is there support for this part of the project? You know, that, is there support for this, support for this? Um, she kind of used the analogy, what it'll do is, it'll kind of measure up your putt. You know, that survey feedback data, is it going to be a, a long, wavy? Uh, challenging putt, or are you close to the hole as far as, um, success with this? So. Yeah. Here's where we're at, and that's a great point, because I actually listened to another company present. Um, at a regional meeting that I was at, and they do a lot of the same services, all, all in one. I mean, they do this all the way up to the architectural design. Uh, the bid letting, the contract, you know, what, whatever they have at all. Where we're still connected to I S G is. They have everything for the completion of the intermediate building. So. Well. We would have to, probably.
They, they, they don't own the blueprints. But they own the, they're, they're not gonna work as is, and the bid packages and all the other stuff, so it'd be a cost associated with taking that away elsewhere. It'd be my, it'd be my guess. It's not. Because, you know, one of the things is they, there's a, we have a good relationship with them, I think the question really comes down to. Do we, is this, is this a service that we want to push forward in the, we've. I've gone back and forth on it. I think that there's value to it, it'll help us get to where we need to be and be successful. Because the last thing I want is a failed bond ref right now, because we didn't, we didn't get, we didn't get the right level of duty.
For me, it's not about the service.
Yeah.
We buy, we know people that we're friends with, they may have the worst price, so you just, that's a little bit someone else, and guess what?
Well. Sure, sure. If, if you want, I can, I can pull my contact from the, from the company that I just talked to.
If there's work from the rest of you, I, I will sign out, but I'm just saying, it's taxpayer money.
Yep.
And sometimes relationships can be taken advantage of.
Well, and, and when we say relationships, the actual. Lead dog that we had working, uh, down here for three years. He's retired and gone. It's the same organization, same company, same everything, um, that we've worked with. So. I mean, we wouldn't be doing this based upon.
You know, the stadium was shot down.
Yep.
And then shot down, we did not get the next, new structure.
Yep.
These are unheard of things.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, I think, I think it would be worth entertaining from my perspective. If we can decrease the price and get the same or better services.
Yeah.
And, you know, because right now it's not considered competitive at all. Right? And they just tell you what you pay and you pay it. I really do that in my own world.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So why would I do it with, I don't know.
Thirty.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not to exceed, but they, they build based on the work, the work that they do.
Oh, not to exceed.
To me, looking at. What they provide and what they don't provide, that we still have to pay on top of that, that's what matters. So if it was that much and it included everything that we need, then yeah. But there are a lot of things, they're like, but, but you still have to pay for this, you still have to pay for this, you still have to pay for this. What are we actually paying thirty thousand dollars for? Three visits? Three trips here, but we still have to pay this mileage, so, I mean, there's a lot of things in there that we still have to pay for on top of that. That I'm not really okay with. If all of it was included, all the things we need, are gonna go with all of that? I might be okay with that, maybe. But the fact that they're saying, we'll do these things. We'll make three trips there, but you still have to pay for all this other stuff. We're not gonna supply any posters, we're not gonna supply any of the actual physical thing you need, you still have to pay for all of that. We're giving you some information, kind of, I just feel like for that amount of money. That should be all in public, saying it's not. So that's kind of.
Yeah. You said we need to make a decision on a more, I mean, is it, we're, we're not all two months, two months off.
Our timeline, you know, we talked about this last, last year, you know, with, with COVID, everything shrunk down a little. We originally started talking about how to facilitate task force. If the goal was to go to bond reference in March. We have to have everything wrapped up in October.
There are some things, I mean, we need to get moving on this. However, that doesn't mean. I mean, I'm pressured into a money situation, I'm not just going to go on my money. So, not that I think it's throwing it out, right?
And our, and our original plan was to go it alone, but, you know, the. Continue down that path. I, Jamie and I are perfectly happy to continue down that path. Uh, but there'll, there'll be some work, there'll be some costs that are incurred that are outside this, just wouldn't be without. Yeah.
Are there, and, and so here's, here's. Are there, and, and so here's, here's, you tell me this direction, so we can, if we still have questions. Now that we've got a chance to look things over and we want to sit back down with them and go through some things. We can, and then on top of that, if you'd like me to contact that um, other company, we can quickly see how, how fast they can come in and, and meet with the three of us again.
What I, what I would like to see, again, fortunately, it gets Tuesday, uh, because turnaround. Yeah. Uh, so I, I did get a chance to look into it recently, so I would prefer to have more time to go back and forth, and I would have liked to see the clearer stuff before. It said explicitly what was going on, so that's, and the piece that left me a little bit open was, it's a not to exceed rather than a fixed amount, so fixed amounts would bother me. We can control what we spend with them based on, based on, based on dollar amount, uh, and we could sign the contract and, and spend very little with them, because we ask them to do very little.
But it's not itemized. So, well, I mean, we can say we only had this, this is what we are paying you, they will say, you only had this.
Well, we, we, so.
I mean, it's itemized, and we said, okay, we'll take these things.
Well, again, it would be, I, I agree with you. I think the way it would be laid out is that we'd have to ask them for, on the pieces, we'd have to say, this is what we want you to do. What is the number of hours and the cost of each piece, so, um, because they're going to, they're going to send us an itemized bill based on the actual expenses. Not to exceed, but you're right, it would be nice to say X, you know, we anticipate this, when we talked about, that this piece would cost four thousand, and this piece is seven thousand, and this pieces. Because that would have made my life easier, uh, because it is hard to go in and say, okay, what is, what is the value, so. The point in this, Jamie and I, when we finish up, we thought about the fact, at the end, we maybe be in the spot where we could say, well, let's do one, two, three, and five, but not four, because that's a little more than what I spend on it. And they didn't, they didn't break it out, they kind of lumped everything together, so we think this shouldn't cost you more than thirty thousand dollars, but now it pays down with the original entire, so. I'm fine with, with, with tabling it, uh, pending more information, but.
Would you be as opposed to having?
I, I'm not opposed to that. Uh, I think the question is finding.
Yeah, Davis knows.
And finding, finding the right service providers, because there may be somebody that does it that's not an architect that provides some of these services.
Sure.
Because it doesn't necessarily have to be an architect that does the pre-bond support, because it really is about things that are not necessarily related to the building plans. With the exception of some of the conceptual drawings that we might want as part of that pre-bond services, that would be the only reason I think you're really looking at the architect for, so. Able, able slash refer back to the.
You're referring back now, aren't you?
The golden grounds.
Yes. Table the, uh, the pre-bond.
Motion to table by Alaska.
Second.
Second by Coons, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. She is going to learn. She's not here and we don't approve anything. You tabled everything. Um, next up on our list is, uh, yeah, do you want to refer this, Dan, do you want to refer this back to the policy committee? Continue our plan here. So basically, the idea was bringing both of us up together because there are pieces in our lap, in our act, and we would try, some of them were just inconsistencies between the two policies we wanted to clean up. Yep. And so I think the question is, until we resolve the other one, do we want to try to delve in, and then have to come back three months from now and make it aligned with a potentially revised policy?
For, for example, in the five hundred series, it says, we cannot have a practice on a Sunday before one PM. On this policy with the community, um, our gyms will open at noon.
Just a little.
So, there's some ink and, yeah.
For sure.
Tough is getting away from flying out.
Dan, is that why you're in motion? Yeah, so, so motion by Coons to table and refer this to policy committee.
Second.
Second by Wolf, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next up, we've got, uh. We moved out of the consent agenda, which would be the contracts. And we'll provide a little bit of context here, if we need to have a broader discussion, uh, we can go into exempt session, uh, if we want to have a broader discussion on it. But the, you know, the general, Justin Davis, you can, and Adam, you can kind of go around me on this, is that. The general goal when we go into these processes, we negotiate teachers' unions, and then we try to, to the extent possible, max that percent increase in the other pools. Uh, that's not always possible in things that are self-supporting, uh, for example, like nutrition, there were years when, you all remember that nutrition was underwater before Becky got here. And, you know, we weren't able to provide raises to those groups because, you know, the, the, the war funds, that wasn't ready to do it, um, similarly at ESP, they've been, because it's self-supported. Um, so we tried to manage the goals, the goal this year, we met, as Adam and I met, uh, the administration, we were trying to keep that three percent across the board. Across all the different labor categories, and then above beyond that, there were some market factor adjustments, and so as we, you know, as we looked at things. And then we've been looking at for example, bus drivers over the last six years, and trying to figure out how to stay competitive with those required grounds, and so we've got things this year for people like adding another. A holiday move, and then trying to increase the rates associated with activities, so we get more bus drivers who are willing to run the activities for us. And so there's some, there's some deviations from that. Trying to do that, initially, we've also got some of those within some of the directors' positions, where we're trying to adjust for what, what the terms are going on around us. And so one of the factors that you guys will remember, as we go through this process, is that we try to do that and it flows. Not necessarily evenly across the board, and so we've had years where we've, where we've held administrator salaries at zero percent, directors at zero percent. And. We drifted in some of our positions that are not as competitive as, as they once were. And so we, uh, there's some recommendations, uh, that Adam and I listen to and uh. Recommend in terms of making some adjustments to reflect market. That's right. It's just, as you referenced earlier, just dependence to the market, uh, for people with experience, uh. We worry about them being in a position where they can walk down the street and get paid significantly more, and then we look at uh, some of those positions and look at what people are paying for people with very little experience to fill those roles. And we're thinking, you know, we're not paying much for that, for somebody who's been here a long time. And there's no perfect line to this, uh, because at the end of the day, it's a very competitive labor market right now, and we're just trying to stay above water with the. Budget increase that we have from, from the state itself. That's kind of, that's kind of my, my general spiel, and I don't think there's anything you want to add to that from the negotiations group's standpoint. I do apologize, normally our past practice has been with the exempt session after the discussion before we publish them, but just the timing of this, uh, we didn't have our meeting until it was last week. And so it's just been a very tight turnaround to get these things on, on the agenda, and I apologize that we didn't get to have our normal exempt session. Exempt sessions, now that we're posting, if you want to go into exempt session, have a, have a brief discussion, go into exempt session for five, ten, fifteen minutes, and then come back up and continue an open session. But uh.
I think I just wanted to make a clarification of why, which I think was. And I'm more faithful to that explanation, and just so that everyone, the public can understand that there are reasons. Why things were done the way they are, and what we're looking around us and.
I think, just like we have with the coaches, I think we, we maybe need to do a little bit better job of, of explaining that process, because oftentimes, consent agenda works very well, it's very efficient. But then people don't necessarily know, I think we all assume that because we're following the same practice we followed for twenty years, that everyone just knows, but there's a lot of new people in the community that maybe, and employees that don't, are like, well, how, how do you decide what we do? We probably just should have, uh.
But I think, I think probably, not now, obviously, we're past the point, but, you know, we have a calendar that we follow, we should kind of put on a calendar, go into exempt session and have a brief discussion about this. So we all kind of know, because I know, um, Cassie and I talked about it, our finances, and we kind of what happens in some of these areas that are way behind, we were going to lose people, and, you know, and, and they were. Able to sustain that with their current budgets and, and some of the, so, um, but I think that might be something we could do in the future, though.
And, and, yeah. Even just as Jimmy and I were talking about, maybe the best way, when we do this, having, even if it's in the consent agenda, having a one-page summary, which is, this is the principles that we use as we go together in the package. So that, so there's no, so there's not this question of confusion about why, you know, why is this person, you know, sure, you know. It's three percent for, for this, but it's three point seven percent on average for this group, and what, you know, why is that? So, you know, those assumptions all happen in the background, uh, and. And, you know, again, I think.
Yeah, I think.
We just have to not make assumptions that people understand, just because at one point, we told people we were doing, uh, from a transparency standpoint, we probably just need to, um, to kind of summarize that in a more public forum.
And I think for people not making that decision, it would be good to know, so I don't record it, it's true.
We don't have the right. And I think we should adjust, we, we should probably adjust the timeline, so we don't wind up.
Yeah, perfect.
So Adam and I talked about this, we really do need to have an exempt session between, here's what we're going to recommend, and here's where we're approving it, and it just, it didn't, there wasn't, there wasn't space in there.
No, no, we're good, so, we're good, but just in the future, we'll be available.
So we have contracts that we can get through if people want to have contracts next year, so we can continue discussing, we can move to exempt session, or somebody can motion to approve the contracts as presented. Motion to approve contracts, as we, motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Alaska, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Motion carries unanimously. Um, there are no information lines.
Let me push for a gentleman close session.
Uh, you cannot do that, because there's, there are magic words, and Jamie has the magic words, and so if you have the magic words, you could do that, um, but uh.
And I'll take notes.
And then we roll call for that.
And you've got the board hold a closed session pursuant to IRS code twenty one point five.
One day.
You do one day to discuss the purchase of particular real estate underwear, which is, which is reasonably expected to be this price of, um, would have to be.
Motion in a closed session, that's the second. Motion by Wolf, second by Alaska. Christie.
Yes, Wolf.
Yep.
Alaska.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Our local is not here today, so going into closed session at seven seventeen, I'm sorry, yeah, closed session seven seventeen.
And we are. Seven thirty seven PM. The next item on our agenda is board learning. I will enter motion to ta, I'll enter again a motion to table, so. Motion, motion by Alaska, second by Coons to table board learning, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously, talking points, Jamie, you're up first.
Um, I think our students in the beginning, that is really amazing, that all three of them could have gone to nationals, so that is phenomenal, and something that's not. Something, I, I don't know that I've heard a whole lot about that club, and so that might be something you might want to take for. Four years to, to look at in some kind of way, because that sounds like if you're leaving, obviously, um, and that all of them are really well spoken and. What are you saying that we've done, that's just something with small club of fifteen kids, and three out of three that went are going to nationals, that's amazing.
Dan? Um, I think for me, really, the, so, I'm excited to see the work that possibly done for our students who are in fact, you know what I mean, and, um, you know, I mean. I have no reason to be that I can do that, you know, you just kind of get everybody sitting down and talking about it, and I'm excited to see what we're going to do, because we're going to do something. Then, we've done some pretty innovative stuff around this, you know, and so I'm kind of excited to see how that whole process turns out. Adam?
Uh, yeah, I like what Davis had to present on, uh, just your lunch with Kirkwood, um, you know, it's good to see forty, over forty percent of our twenty twenty one grad students were former concurrent enrollment credits. That's huge, look at the numbers on paper, you know, three hundred and seventy three thousand, fourteen dollars, uh, yeah, so it's good to see us continue to grow, uh, while Kirkwood is our students, you know, and all the community, those college credits.
That's good, and I'll finish off. Um, I also like your presentation, one of the things I was going to ask, I forgot about was, we talked about the certifications, it would be nice to get a report out, because of kind of, you know, completely see it like the CNAs and those things, and, and it would be nice to see how many people can get. That I, there's a couple of kids I've talked to who are heading off to college, we've talked about the fact that they, they essentially only have three years of college to finish up, and so they're going to go to college and they only need to be there for three years to get their degree. It'll be nice to be, you know, we talked about, you know, that one semester, how many do we have, where they basically flopped off a whole year from their college, uh, to graduate, and see, and, you know, the CNA and others, uh, certifications would be good. Um, I'm looking forward, I saw that email pop in with the link to the art, and I'm looking forward to seeing that, I think, uh, Derek does a great job between the empty bowls and the Walmart art show. All good stuff. That's what I've got. I will now enter a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Wolf. Okay. Second by Coons, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned at whatever time it is.
Seven forty one.